Okay, I've got 1:30. We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Hi.
Peter?
Here.
DeCook?
Here. We have a quorum. We have three items on our agenda today. First is approved Class B liquor license for Carper Family Winery LLC. I'll make a motion to approve Carper's Class B liquor license. Is there any discussion? See none. A roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Hi.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye. Motion carries. Number two on the agenda is a conservation update. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We are here to throw a hat and ring for the ARPA funds. We recently attended the ISAC conference. And what we were seeing in the air was how well the ARPA funds meshed with conservation. Just by the nature of getting outside, social distancing, relieving stress, so... We put together a list of projects. Some of them are wish lists, some of them are definite needs. So we brought those to you. Karen has a copy.
So I guess we'll just start from at the top of the list. So we have an educational exhibit hall that is about a third of the way finished. So we completed Phase One with funding mainly from our friends group and outside donations. And we're looking at continuing the other two phases, and that'd be about $160,000. Which would be great to finish up that room since we've had increased usage at the nature center and at our parks and at our trails. And then we're also looking at doing a huge website upgrade to make our website more accessible to the public. So they can find our parks, so they can make online reservations for our shelters, for the nature center. Get some videos on there to showcase what our county has to offer, as well as have the registration for programs and able to pay online. We realized that especially with COVID, how non-use friendly our website is, how much better it can be by doing that. We've gotten three estimates, and one is also from the same company that the county's doing their current website updates with. So we're hoping that either COVID funds could pay for our updates, or we could split that cost. So we've moved that back on board. And Mark took up all the projects.
Okay, so this all comes rounded into a big circle, and it'll all come together. But we just, you all heard about the COVID relief grant for the bike trail, right? We did find out just yesterday, we got the official word from DOT, we did receive the $637,000 grant. So I came to a work session quite a while ago, and you said that at some point we would need to bring a formal resolution to you in support of basically helping with the cash flow during the project. Okay? Because it is a reimbursement grant. You have to do the work, get an invoice, get a canceled check, send it to DOT, and then they will reimburse us. So good news is we have $637,000 that taxpayers don't have to pay for. The other part of that is the trail, we did a trail payment analysis study, which you have in front of you. You already have one, right? Okay. What it came down to, if you look on the red tab where I tabbed it for you, just real quick. The rehabilitation of Great Western Trail alone will be $4,400,000. Problem with that is obviously Conservation Board does not have that type of fund, so it'll all have to be through right into grants. Our problem is that we don't have a good source of income for matching funds. So what we are proposing is that if you would allow us, we'll have to do this through a formal process. But we would like to take a resolution to our board so that we could start receiving our rental fees from our nature center and our new lodge, and put that into a revolving fund so that we could build up matching funds for grants. Because if we don't have a source of income, we can't determine our own fate. We have to come to your board every time we want to apply for a grant with our hand out and ask, can we do this? And I know, we know how budgets go. There might be times where you're going to say no. So if we had a revolving fund where we could be more self-sufficient, that would greatly help us. So where this comes back to the ARPA funds is we have three campgrounds. Two of them which would be, one of them would be easy to run utilities through. We currently do not charge for camping. We would like to upgrade our campsite so that we could have electricity at a minimum at our campsite. So we could start charging for camping, which would create a revenue source for us. If we could take those three revenues and put them in a revolving fund, it may take a couple of years, but we could build up matching funds. We want to be more self-sufficient somehow.
What are the three? Again, it's the camping, updating camp sites?
We run our nature center.
The nature center?
Our new lodge.
Are you charging?
We do, but we do not charge a lot for, we charge a minimal fee.
So you would increase the fees and, what the fees you're getting now, are they going right to the conservation?
No.
They go to the general fund.
Oh, general fund, okay. So you want to switch that to have your own account and then increase your fees, so that would be one.
One.
And the camping, and then what else?
Our lodge, our new lodge.
Your new lodge, okay, gotcha.
What was last year's revenue from conservation? Do you know, Megan?
We shut down last year, so...
It's used 19.
I think it was, I think it was around 13. We weren't there then, and people all that. I think it's 13,000, 16,000. You know, I mean, if you, if you put, okay, just for instance, we've got a State Rec Trails grant out there right now, and we haven't heard back from them. We applied for $115,000 for that grant. Our matching funds is $28,750. In a couple of years, we could have matching funds for that grant.
I just wanted to try to get the nexus of approximately how much revenue does conservation generate? And it looks like it's 10 to 20, right, generally?
Right now, yes.
But if you started charging for campsites, you could...
We have a problem with squatters, I'll say, at our campsite because they're free. So we have situations where people move in and they don't leave. And that would greatly help our situation if we could charge for camping. And you'll probably hear from us this winter sometime when we have time to create some ordinances about camping, but...
Can you talk about the $4.4 million and what, what is that? That is something that has, or what, why, why is it?
The trail was, is old. The surface is over 20 years old. It's asphalt, it's cracked, it's in bad shape. We've done numerous things to try to maintain it over the year, but they've just been bandied.
Okay.
So the $637,000 grant, what we earmarked that for is we actually hired Snyder and Associates to do the payment analysis study. And they actually wrote the grant for the $637,000. It's a $752,000 project. But Conservation Board has a reserve fund from the Veterans Parkway Microsoft deal. That's the only way we had matching funds to apply for that grant. If we didn't have that, we would have been here asking for matching funds. So the $637,000, what that will do for us is totally repave, tear up and repave 1.8 miles. We determined the absolute worst sections. The trail is 11.8 miles that we manage. And it will, it will renovate, redo 1.8 miles of that 11.8.
Is the culvert problem, is that part of this solution?
Yes, there's a 60, there was a culvert allowance in that.
Okay, so that...
Yeah, we're going to do the culverts, everything before we pave.
Okay.
Yeah, so that still leaves a lot of trail that is going to need work. And we realize the only way we're going to do that is through grants.
And this is the same project where, when you came to our work session, it's basically the county, you want the county to prepay it to come up with the...
As the bill's coming in.
So this, but I thought at the time it was like a million bucks, but it is not, 687?
It's 752 eventually.
And we said yes to that, so we just have to cash flow it from the general fund and then get reimbursement grants.
And it won't come all in at once. We might have a $60,000, $80,000 mobilization fee. And then we'll get that, we'll send it in, you know, and then we might have a $300,000 payment fee all at once.
So we've got a couple of moving parts here today. We've got a little bit on the trail. We've got sort of a request for having sort of dominion upon your own revenues versus general fund. And then we've got some requests for COVID-funded projects. Let's focus on one at a time here, because I, my mind doesn't always jump around perfect. Let's work on the COVID-funded work class projects first. I've got the redesigned education exhibit. I've got web, website. Do we have some pricing on some of the other stuff that you have here?
Those two are probably our best cost estimates that we have. The others we don't have prices on. And one thing that we haven't even touched yet is about having broadband out there. So that we would then have access to the eating program to do our claims and to be on top of our budget, like without having to email someone for information. We're currently also without internet phone service right now because of everything that's going on. And we've called every company to try and get it fixed, and IT's been out there, and everything went in this afternoon. But if we can just get on the same system as everybody else, then our stuff would all be through IT. And then we wouldn't have to call five different companies to figure stuff out when something doesn't work.
I would love to see a quote for what broadband would cost to get out there.
And the engineer's office is very interested in that.
And the shop's.
A property away from them.
Yeah, because we could maybe have some efficiencies and scale to run broadband to both places. And I know that that certainly fits within the parameters of the policy.
Running utilities at campground, we don't have estimates because, I mean, it's going to be an RFP process. We're going to have to probably have Snyder and Associates look at that.
More information than I have on funds and then also sort of a priority list, because there's a lot of stuff. And I'm just going to tell you that all of the stuff is going to be paid for with ARPA funds, but I would anticipate some of it will be.
Let's see, I think those three...
We gave you Kristin.
Yeah, I have this in the machine. Those three, to me, seem to be complete priorities.
Although the website's pretty minor anyhow, so cost-wise, it's not, it's not a big number. The other ones I don't, I don't, a little more, but I'm happy to look at all. But I mean, if we just went down the entirety of the list and totaled it up, I'm just telling you, I don't, I don't believe that that's going to happen. We need someone, probably.
And we, when we spoke with Kristin, we talked about the nature center, exhibit hall, broadband, internet, and then the utilities to campgrounds. Those are the ones we marked.
So, well, I'm happy focusing on those four. If we can get some more defined pricing on those, that would be helpful. And then if there's one or two other things on the list that you think are really priority, or get pricing on three of them or four of them to give us something to choose from, or pick a couple of them. I think that would be a good choice. Those are just my thoughts on that.
Do you have another copy of that?
Changing to... Changing to topics to the building up matching funds. I'm generally okay with it, and I don't know if my colleagues are generally okay with it. Pitfalls that I see are taxpayers could say, we pay taxes, some of our 700,000 or 600,000 or whatever your budget was for the year goes from collected taxes to conservation to do things. And now we're getting taxed a second time to use the services. I don't, I don't know what that looks like. I can envision some grumbling on it, but if, if the numbers weren't terrible, and honestly, you all don't collect that much in revenue if it's $15,000, it's not like, it's that punitive to folks. I don't know what camping, I don't, I don't know how people feel about that. I don't know.
One thing I will say is...
I don't want squatters either.
The vast majority of Conservation Boards do keep their revenue. The nature center was built with a donation from Ellis and Ed. He donated $1.1 million to the Conservation Board, and that's what built the nature center. Very few tax dollars did go into the construction. Tax dollars have gone in mightily to maintaining the building.
And salary.
Right. So I won't say that. And the lodge was mostly built on a donation.
Agreed, it's a good point.
Those rental funds would really, like just for example, we had to get a new roof down on the nature center. And if we would have those funds sitting there, it would have paid for that instead of like having to have that yearly question. So we have no maintenance there.
Here's my point. The stuff that's already being rented, like if I wanted to go have a wedding out there, you're, I'm charged for that, I believe. And so that I don't have an issue with if, if the Conservation Board keeps those rentals. I'm just spitballing on if we bring electricity out to campgrounds, I mean, and then charge. And I'm not saying I'm against it. So I'm saying most of what you're already doing, I don't even have an issue with. So that you can build up revolving funds or funds for matching funds, that's fine. I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around a little bit about additional funds, because that's what, that's what you need, there are funds. So you don't have to come here and ask.
And I will say that the camping revenue then would be put into a fund that we could put back into other county assets like the bike trail. Anything we do with that money would go back to the county assets. It might be putting a roof on the nature center. It might be, you know, building a new shelter, but it would go back to the users eventually.
And I think most people when they, like Grant Park has become super popular, so it's a campground. And when they call and they ask about it, they're very surprised that they're not charged a fee, that there's not like a tiny amount of camping rate. So I don't know that people would really be too upset if they have to pay a small fee, and then people are expected to pay that. And there's very few free campgrounds out there anymore.
Are there Warren County, what percentage of the people that camper from Warren County?
I have a lot of people that are from Warren County.
So I think that... But I, that's a good point. We do keep, we have our campers registered, so we know who they are or who they say they are. And we know when they're, they come and when they go, but we don't charge. So we do have the camping registration slips. And for some reason, Grant Park is up right off Highway 5. You can't believe the number of out-of-state people. Hickory Hills, it's a lot more local people, but up there off of Highway 5. It's state, one time we dropped a tube, there were 10 campsites, eight of them were from out-of-state.
Well, that, that's...
That's a bonus, that county bringing money.
Absolutely.
I agree. I think, I applaud your ideas to grow revenue, as long as it's not excessive and there's not a lot pushed back. And if you can keep your campgrounds full and charge a fee, to me, that's a win-win for everybody, just from my standpoint.
It's a double win in terms of not, not...
Exactly, you know?
So other non-residents are happy to pay.
And I'd be all for you if you have your own, if you're trying to build your own revenue and having your own funding. I, I just think that makes sense. I appreciate how you're thinking.
Our camps, we only have 10 campsites in that campground. We would like to expand it to about 15, because with our current staff, I think we could manage 15 pay campsites. You start getting a lot bigger, and then you're moving the city into the country, and you're going to start needing more law enforcement personnel. If, if, this is going to be beyond my tenure around here, but if our board decides to go bigger, they're going to have to look at hiring law enforcement. And then that, then that brings in a whole other salary, and then you're going to talk about, are you making enough money to? So that's why I'd like to get to the point where we can manage it and not hire those people.
And/or create additional problems.
Right.
And one quick, without deviating off your structure, I, but the, the website? Is there a reason why we can't combine that with what we're doing with our website? Like, do you need, and I just don't know, and I'm not, I, do you need your very own website that will want to count?
Yes.
Okay. And is that the way it is now then?
It's exactly that way now, but if we, with the same company that you guys are going with, then they might be able to give us a better rate than hosting both of them. And then if we get, if we get broadband, they can also have emails through the county so that we're not paying go-baddy to host our website and host our emails, and they're a slew of not great, not great businesses on their website.
I think broadband is going to be critical. And I, I talked to our IT director about this, and he, he's on top. Like, he, he's got a plan around that. He's got to kind of figure out how it can work for both. Because he did say, well, confirmation would benefit from this as well. I think there's been some discussion and direction too, but I think of all the things, that's the most critical thing that we need to get out there for you. So they're on our system and communicating and not having to go through all the extra steps. And so, it's my two cents.
I know we're past our five minutes.
I think you got, I think you got, I think you got at least a majority of the board on sort of restructuring some of the matching funds to build in time.
So then our next step for that would be to bring a reservation to you guys, that actually looks part of that line.
That, that is actually what Don Bowman has prepared for the support of the bike trail fund. And that, you'll get that, I'll be, I'll be at your next meeting, so you can actually, I'm just giving a heads up, that's what we're going to come up with. So that you can think about that ahead of time.
And we have a bid on that too already, or that, that already catches the whole thing. And then we'll, we'll just look to see what some of those numbers are on wish lists and need items. Maybe we can do a little bit of both, but I think you're going to be on pretty good ground on broadband, although that's not going to be inexpensive. I don't know about the first one, the website, I would say yes. Maybe on the other one too. But if we can put some more numbers together on what those would look like, then we can figure out how we split up the pie.
Do you want me to send you Grant's contact information for the website?
Is it from Radiant 9?
Yeah.
I already have his information. He's one of the people who's asked us.
Oh, okay.
But thank you.
Yes.
Was he the 5295?
Yes.
That's the one I like.
Those, these really have to watch. You worry about what someone else, they can be extremely high, like 10 times higher worth, so.
We generally pay over $300,000 to host our site right now.
Yeah, yeah. Well, when we, we looked at one, it was 4,200 bucks or 4,500 bucks for the start of the segment. I mean, it's just, and it's kind of in the fine print, so stay aware.
Anything else for the update?
Well, just to piggyback on your Phase 2 and 3 of their educational, it's really difficult for them to have that because of the schools and how dependent they are. You go in there now, it's very sparse, sparse. And there's some great exhibits, but there are very, very few. And it's just a big draw to the Innet Center to have those educational exhibits up.
The building was built in 97, and before Karen, there never was a comprehensive plan about what to do with that space. So she came in, and she's worked hard at developing a plan, and she put the plan together, and it's time we wrap it up.
And then we can finish that at one, and then complete the inspection.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for being here.
We're not going to say we're not going to knock on your door and, you know, have a little revenue. You still, you still might hear.
Yeah, it'll go away.
Well, if you look at that, that's...
For $15,000, you're promising that with a bag of extra money again?
It's 4.4 for this, the Great Western Trail, but the Somerset Trail was included in that plan, and it's more like 3.3.
We need to find some big...
Yeah.
Well, we don't.
The problem is they're using half the trail right now. They're going to a certain point, and they're stopping, and they're never going to the other half of the county because they don't want to lose that part of the trail. So that's down to this other end.
Megan, it's a coming tap, because the surface is decent from Des Moines to coming, and then they're not going. But the two sections we are totally repaying are south of Des Moines.
I know, but it's a, it's a numbers problem, because that's, that's the deal. I don't have $7 million. The county, look at our whole county budget for a year. We don't have a free $7 million of just excess dollars.
So you don't match your funds.
But, but that's why they want the use of their rentals, so that they can start applying for all the other grants that are out there that they can use those funds to match.
I guess, I guess...
It's going to take a while.
It's just going to take a while. $20,000 a pop, so.
It is.
But at least it gets down to rights, the rights.
We've got to start somewhere, and we have. And if you, if you notice, there were 83 applicants on that COVID relief grant, and we scored number four.
Awesome.
So, but that, I'm not pat myself on the back, but what I'm saying is that shows you that people understand that the trail is a bad shape. Because those grant review committee people, they know.
You write your own grants?
Not this one.
You have someone that does that?
Snyder.
Oh, Snyder wrote the grant?
I wrote little portions of it, but not...
You gave him all the content, probably?
No, I, yeah.
They're still using money like I gave them.
It, it, I mean, it pays, it pays off when you're hired, so they do that because they know, they know what's included, and it worked.
Understood, all right.
All right.
Thank you, Karen.
Everybody, appreciate it. Okay, last on the agenda on our public meeting is discuss facility manager position with possible action. And Kirk, you want to join us? And I, I did have a chance to talk with Megan just a little bit on some numbers, but I, I guess I'll start the discussion, and then I'll hear from everyone. Everyone can ask questions. I, I think that we need additional assistance in maintenance. But what, what you call that person or what that looks like, I think is debatable. Timing on it, I think, is also debatable. And I, I'm not trying to punt again, that's not the purpose. The purpose was to discuss today, so we can discuss it. But we still don't have some of the numbers, and that's, that's just a little quick for turnaround time. But I, I did get a chance to talk with our budget director on what it looks like. So all this explain process, and that looks like, we want to go through and look at from, say, calendar year, January 1 to present increase in Warren County staffing costs. And I know what the total cost is for all new hires and salary benefits through that point, but I don't know how many folks have left and or what that delta difference is. I think we need to know that. I don't know that yet. Because we know we've hired in dispatch, one at the treasurer. Did the recorder go one from part-time to full this year?
At least, at least up our rate considerably, like a big, a good number, would you be aware of?
Yeah. And so, so here's my thoughts. I just need to know where we're at currently on that number. Because I looked at, we looked at last year's number, and what we saw was, there was about an increase between valuations and new taxes coming online to the tune of about a ballparking at 800. And part of that was, was there was some real benefit by having our mental health levy rate drop 16 cents. But it's going to go back up. So there, we tried to limit that yo-yoing effect of mental health. Because we, as a board, do not control what our region does and sets their levy rate at. I don't have any ability to control it. This year, it worked out great. People saw a little bit less, softened the blow. Next year, it could go up 20 cents, and that's a, throw your hands up, and we didn't do it. But I just want to be cognizant of it, because there was about a $349,000 tax reduction just from that mental health levy decrease, I think. Is that right, Megan?
Yep, about 350.
Okay. So there's some number where we've increased costs, and my guess is it's going to be four to six salaries of new folks, because sometimes we'll have Megan and June left, and we replaced with new Megan. And there was a little bit of a gap to the, what I call the good. Megan probably doesn't think it's good. She's like, I would rather have it be a gap to that. She'd like to pay, pay 10 or 15,000 more than our former budget director, but, you know, there's a little bit of a gap. So there's some downside. I mean, there's some net positive on the, on the numbers on that hire. And then there's folks that, if you look at our consent agenda every, every other week, perhaps the engineer hires a new secondary roads person, and then you look one below, and there's a secondary road person that left. So those sort of wash.
Right.
But they're the number, and I'm guessing that the number's probably somewhere around 200 to 300,000 in new salary between the dispatch folks that got brought on, one in the treasurer's office. There's four that I know of. And then tech has some increases too. Then we know that there's about a 3% increase on healthcare. So maybe 50 to 70. Tech has some things. So what I want to do is try to get a general... So maybe fifty to seventy, tech has some things, so what I wanna do is try to get a general number of assuming a similar trend line on growth and leaving levy rates flat, just start out baseline flat, what is there to work with? Because I think that's important, because, and I'm not, I'm not picking on this one, this is the one that broke the camel's back, it's not, I wanna, I wanna hire someone additional for maintenance, because I have to do it. But I also think that the board has to be looking forward a little bit to what budget time looks like, and maybe we can do some better projections on that, I think we can. But before I would pull the trigger on a facility manager at the range sort of discussed prior versus maybe a maintenance person or something, I, I didn't know that. So I'm not punting on it, I just wanna know sort of a little bit closer to where we're at, because taking even out mental health levy, there's a coal raise that literally takes about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of, no matter what, that just happens, because we're in contracts with sheriff's office, dispatch and employees, so there's, we know that there's already gonna be a built-in three fifty up, we know that there's gonna be some additional cost for hiring the folks that we've hired year to date. And so my guess is that's probably pushing us closer to the number, and so if we start going over that number and revenues come in about the same, then the board has to figure out, you're gonna have two options. And I, I'm, I'm okay with one of the options, but I'm not okay with the other. One of the options is going to be an increase in the general supplemental levy rate, because that's really the only thing that we can impact, we're not gonna decrease or increase the general basic, it's just set at three point five, and that's gonna stay the same. So you can increase taxes, or you can cut costs. That means firing folks or lowering individual department budgets. And I think we need to sort of start thinking about next year's budget, because we've brought on some new staff this year. I think we need to start doing that sooner rather than later. Probably not opposed to someone new in the maintenance department, I think it's new. But I, but I also don't wanna start backing ourselves into a corner where we're gonna have to make one of those two choices. Now, if the board, two out of the three of the members of the board want to reduce spend in some areas, I, I know that it's not getting reduced in IT, and we know that. There's some big numbers coming from IT, and so there's something else that probably should be factored in. And we also know that there's going to be some, you know, there's gonna be some additional staffing at Justice Center. Like, while we'll have a reduction in inmate transportation costs and housing in another county or other counties, a lot of that's gonna get swamped with jail staff, this right out of the chute. So I, I'm okay with whatever the board wants, how, how they wanna tackle it, I just wanna start being cognizant of those, because I know what's coming, and I've already got a pretty good guess that we're gonna have a little bit of a deficiency, which leaves really only two options, and that's increase general supplemental levy rate, or cut costs. And if it's cut costs, then I think that the board has to be, in my mind, honest and transparent to the point of, let's start identifying some, some areas for the pay for. And that, that can exist, but there's not, there's not, in my mind, any, anything that's not gonna at least make some waves. So if you identify something, there's going to be someone in the county that's not gonna be thrilled with the decision, and that's fine, that's our job, but I just wanna be able to make sure we can pay for it without increasing that supplemental levy rate.
So when you said there, the two, of the two options, you were okay with one of them?
I'm okay with cutting it, if the numbers are, I'm not okay with, I'm not, I didn't get high, the folks who voted for me didn't, didn't tell me to raise my taxes or much. Our very first year, my very first year on the board, we did increase the general supplemental rate a little bit to cover so that we could send some additional funds to the engineers department, because Warren County, for whatever reason, historically, had not been sending the maximum amount to the engineers, the secondary roads department, and I think it was pretty reflective in our roads. And so that, that warranted a minor tweak up to, to, to get it, to get it down. And I think, yeah, some of it's weather dependent, but I think generally our roads are in better shape than they were three years ago.
I'd say that we have not gotten one.
Yeah.
Maybe one in seven months.
My first year, I had a hundred probably.
It was awful.
I noticed a lot.
So, so I'm not saying I'm never willing to, to look at the, the revenue side and increase tax, I'm not saying there are things that make sense.
You have to justify it.
And honestly, if you wanna be real truthful about taxes, when you bond for Justice Center and for E nine-one-one, that's a debt levy, I mean, that is an increase in taxes, but those things also warranted, in my mind, I felt it was shameful that this county didn't have a functional court facility. I felt, I felt it was shameful that our nine-one-one and emergency management people couldn't talk to each other. And so if someone was in rural Warren County, and they dialed nine-one-one, and they couldn't get through, and someone died, I felt like that, in my mind, was worthy of voting yes on a bunch of the tower projects. So, so some of those are in there, and they happen, so I'm not saying I'm never willing to, to look at it, but it is not my first choice to, to increase taxes on folks.
Well, we also have to understand that when we do incur that debt, we're opening up those to funds that we haven't had access to.
Nor, let's be honest, Norwalk and Coming and Carlisle and even Indianola to some extent have grown a lot over the last twenty years with TIF districts, and when the county had no debt whatsoever, I mean, they didn't, they didn't recapture any of those TIF funds. So as much as I don't love debt personally in my own mind, as a county, having some debt at a low interest rate that's serving the greater purpose is actually pretty good. Otherwise, a big high-vii distribution center gets built in Coming, and some of that's TIFed, and the county gets bucked. Not so interested in that. I feel like we can actually reclaim some of that to help pay for, for those things, and so a little debt doesn't bother me, a lot of debt bothers me, but I'm not too worried about it. But I, I think it's at least worth exploring, you know, discussing that we, we have increased, that's part of the tax hit. Because at the end of the day, most of the citizens in this county could care less what the specific levy rate is, or they just wanna know, did my property taxes go up, down, or sideways, and how much does that leave from valuation? Or are the school boards, the city that I live in, and the county taxing more? And that's some combination of it.
Well, one of the things that I've wanted to do for the past four years was to move dispatch from our general fund over to the supplemental levy, so that that does free us up to have that additional staffing that the sheriff wants for the jail when it opens. It also helps to establish a firm foundation going forward for a nine-one-one communication system. Not only does it establish funds that can be set aside for a new system in fifty years, but it can also help pay for those staffing that right now is a draw on the general fund. So that's one. And like I said, that's just the one that still, we don't have direction on that yet. But hopefully, within the next three months, we will have a definite vote from the board, so.
Yeah. I get it. So those are my thoughts, I'm, I do think we need additional help in the maintenance department, I'd love to hear Kirk's thoughts on that. I, I don't know, so it has to be a facility manager, I don't, I don't, I don't know. And then on the timing of it, I, I do wanna get some of those numbers right, and I think Megan can probably do that by early next week, you think?
To get, like, the new hire and?
I wanna know, I wanna know what sort of a projection looks like.
I'll have to see. I might need a minute.
Maybe by the end of next week, I'm fair next Friday, eight days.
Let me look at it and start running it. It takes, it takes me a little bit longer right now, just 'cause I'm not, you know, the whole valuation process is a little newer.
Yeah, there's some formulas there, but I mean, the, the bonus or the good thing about things are, our county is growing, and we're adding not only residential property tax dollars to the bottom line, but we're adding commercial industrial. I mean, I, I would not do this job in half the counties in Iowa, I just, I wouldn't. I, I wouldn't do it, we're fortunate that we start with plus seven hundred, or plus eight hundred, or plus six hundred. There are places that start at flat or down. I guess you don't go down.
Even in our worst year, it was one fifty or three hundred something.
You usually have something to, to figure things out, and then you can be a little creative, so we usually have some room. My fear, though, is that we've used a good chunk of some of that room, but I'd like to know that, and then if there's some space, I'm, I'm more than happy to look, and if there's not, then I'm still happy to look at adding something to maintenance. But then I think that the board should, should go on the record and say, where, where's it coming from? Unless people are gonna say, I'm gonna, it's not coming from anywhere, I'm just gonna vote for a tax increase, which is fine. But I'm not gonna say that, because I'm not gonna do it.
Can I ask some questions first?
Sure.
Like, when you say facilities manager, what are you talking about? What is that definition then?
I think that it encompasses all of facilities, I think right now we're in a big, kind of, kind of a defining moment in facilities, with a lot of our staff going into the Justice Center and emptying buildings that we currently lease, but were under contract, either buy out or continue to lease. So we've got nine facilities, kind of, that we, are encompassed under the, the, under Warren County. Three we lease and six we own, and some we use and some we don't use, and I think a facility manager would come with, with that discipline of, you know, what all our facilities are, we would understand what the quality of the foundations, the HVAC systems, the control systems, the flooring, the overall general construction, and we could get a good analysis on, and market value, and we could take it, the look at, you know, our whole, our whole, all our, all the buildings and what our plan with those buildings are. That would be one component of a facilities manager. Doug's pulled a couple of things on leases, and we're kind of mulling over, you know, what are we gonna do with this building, but they all relate, and where our people can go, and where they're gonna be the most comfortable and best environment for employees. I, I think that's one aspect, the other aspect is the Justice Center and all the, all the functioning components over there, and the training and commissioning, and that's, the urgency of this for me is that there's gonna be a lot of information transferred from the contractors to Warren County, and we're getting a lot of pressure on us to assign an individual that they could start communicating this information to. When we get the keys turned over to us at the Justice Center, it's not just, hey, we're done here, good luck. There is a ton of knowledge and, and, and information, how the key cards work, how you access things, how the doors work. It's just, it's, I've been told, and a massive amount of information that needs to be transferred, and we need to give, you know, somebody, either it's Kirk, and you heard him say the other day that he's working two full-time jobs now. I think we're, push is just coming to shove on this, and, and so that, when I say facilities manager, I'm talking about, you know, someone that comes to the board on a periodic basis and gives us an update on our facilities that we're actually budgeting out into the future, on what kind of roof we're gonna need, what kind of, what are we, what are we gonna need to do with this facility in the next five years? All things Kirk is completely capable of probably doing, but has absolutely no time. I mean, it's basically, the argument is reactive versus proactive. Right now, we're completely reactive, Kirk gets his phone ringing however times a day, he goes and fixes it, and we have, we're just, and it's more expensive this way, instead of being proactively with a plan and a, and a, and we know, like, right now, what's our budget gonna look like next year? We need to do this for everything we're doing, we have to be budgeting out two, three, four, five years, and I know it's difficult, but, you know, valuations have remained pretty consistent, and they spike a little and they go down a little, but we can certainly put a number on it, and we can tag this stuff and know, hey, this is what we're, what it's gonna look like, we have to do it generally from a budget standpoint, and we need to do it from a facility standpoint and a employee standpoint. You know, we should ask our elected officials to tell us what they're gonna need for staffing a year out, two years out. We know what our growth's gonna be here in Warren County, I mean, it's anticipated that we're gonna continue to grow for the next ten years. We should just be proactively thinking about how we're gonna, we should be addressing problems that are gonna happen two years from now, and not, and not with guys like Kirk Baker and employees in situations where they're reacting all the time. So that's, that's what a facilities manager would help us do that, a manager for the county would help us do that. It's bigger, I mean, it's just a mentality, the bigger, growing counties have managers, and they have a proactive approach, and they have a straight strategic planning, and they're out in front of these things. I would say we're not out in front of our maintenance right now, and it's not a personal reflection on Kirk Baker, it's not. It's, we haven't, we don't, he doesn't have the resources and the tools, and it takes money to run these facilities and maintain them. And we're gonna go, you know, so that's, you know, and, and I think, Aaron, you're absolutely dead on, right? We agree on, we have to agree on all of this, it's just a function of what the priorities are and how we get out in front of this. I, I don't think Warren County should be in a, hey, we can't, we can't do anything because we don't have the money. Because I don't think that's true. I know there are tremendous budget things, there are more things coming to the county next year, like the sheriff and his, he has to require, or provide medical services to his inmates, huge number coming, you know. Excuse me. Choking on my gum, but we, you know, we should be feeding these numbers, we should have this out in front of us as much as we can and, and be looking at them and targeting, but when it comes to maintenance, I, it's just, you know, something I feel is important. You know, you feel, you have your things that, that, you know, conservation, you know, we need to, we need to do this educational thing. And it's, that's just what we have to do, is prioritize these things, and sit down and say, what really is ultimately important? Where, where, where our numbers at? So I totally agree with Aaron and with you that, hey, let's, let's see what we're doing, but we are gonna miss some information, maybe that's okay, you know, that's not gonna kill the county, and that's not, you know, the end of the world. I just think that, you know, we, we should just be, we should really be thinking in terms of how we can get more proactive and how we make decisions here, just generally, and this maintenance is just one, one, one issue.
Well, I definitely agree on the overall plan for, like, management of our facilities, but Kirk, I, I know you, a little bit before I came on, and you're on, and seeing the progression of how all this has kinda happened, and I know it was placed in your lap, and really something that you wanted, but you've been in this, this is your job, this is what you tend to do, so what do you see with facilities? I mean, what, what's your goal for how this is? I, I don't think, in my opinion, it wouldn't be far off from where Darren's at, but what are your thoughts?
Well, what, what I see is good, 'cause currently, right now, I, that's, that is part of my job, is to try to look as far as I can to try to come up with projects, I usually have a list of five, ten hitters with two or three being what I really think needs to happen in the next budget, or two. But we are getting to a point where, especially with the new building coming up, that we can actually take an opportunity now and look at some buildings, either can we still use them? If we are, then what does that cost look like, who's gonna be in them? And that, that too makes a difference on how many maintenance staff you have, because if you have seven buildings spread out throughout, and you're doing maintenance on HVAC, you say, you know, seven different HVAC systems, as you start to shrink that down, your travel time and your issues that you're not able to be there, because whenever you leave a building, something's happening in another building, but. But, um, you know, minimum, I would, I would feel would be at least one, minimum one full-time person and a part-time person. It'd probably more ideally to be two full-time. But you know, I'm, I'm going off of having Bob here for twenty hours. That works out pretty well, it works out good for him. It works out good for me, cause then I can, when I'm looking at projects, I try to do my bigger projects when I have a second person. So not knowing, um, exactly how big that monster will be. And we know it's gonna be something, but, um, you know, it's gonna be brand new, so we're hoping it's not, uh, you know, what I was used to before. But we went, you know, we're going from eighteen beds to eighty-eight beds. Not that they'll all be full day one when we walk in, but you just, you just add in that aspect. Then you get more public and through what we haven't had and stuff. And so when, when I look at it, I'm looking at, if we can get one or two people, then if you were to have me be the facilities manager or whatnot, I can actually pull back and do that stuff to where I would, I'm not being too much. With that being said also, then you're, I'm still there too, to actually go and help at the same time.
Oh yeah, I, I don't, I don't think our county, I mean, I would not be in support of having someone in a suit and tie as the manager of facilities that doesn't know how to turn a wrench or get their hands dirty and do a job. I think that someone exists that can probably do.
Well, and you, and you have some knowledge of what buildings we currently have. Yeah, you bring in somebody else. Yes, they could look from the outside, look in and, and have a pretty good idea, cause that's what they do.
Sure, and not, not to diminish having some like supervisory role over a future plan. I just would much rather, I mean, by a long shot, rather hire an independent contractor to come in and generate a report on some of those things.
Building study.
As opposed to paying someone seventy thousand dollars a year that can't turn a wrench. I have zero desire for that one. That's just my take. So I'm out, I'm, I'm out of the running. Kirk's done a project, Kirk's done a proj- Kirk's done a project with me once. He knows. But I mean, I think they have to have some actual practical knowledge.
And then I think too, that we need to look at, from a maintenance staff, what kind of maintenance staff are we gonna wanna look at? How skilled, to what, to what level? Because that comes with cost. And if you're what, somebody is an electrician, you're gonna have to pay them. You know, and say.
What do you think we need?
Right now, currently, I think we need somebody that's mechanically inclined and can come in and do things with, with some direction, but not have to be, you know, step by step. And they're gonna have to learn the buildings and learn different things.
And I find that some of those.
And everybody has to learn something. But when, when we talk about, you know, ideally, like schools, they usually have an HVAC person or persons for their district. Well, that might make sense for them. And that doesn't make sense for us, I don't think, because for one, we couldn't afford them and then.
What if you have a problem, problem with HVAC for three months? They're paying a premium rate to do something that you can literally pick up the phone and call the HVAC company and they can kind of outsource it.
It, it boils down to, to what degree of expertise do we want as maintenance people? And I think a lot of that stems back to just getting some people with some good mechanical aptitude. Not saying they're an electrician or they're not an HVAC person, but if they're gonna get hired, they're gonna understand that here's your ground and then this is your wage. And, and, you know, we don't wanna go super cheap because we've, we've seen how sometimes that works out. And people are different than our projects, but, you know, and that's how I look at it. It's trying to get quality people in to help us and longevity wise. So the longer we keep them in that job, the more they know about, the easier it becomes. Plus, we don't have to then retrain somebody. And, you know, I don't want, there's necessarily either be jumping grounds for experience. I'm gonna go to the county and work for two years and then go work for this other corporate, you know? I can't solve that, but at the same time, you know, if you give them a great, a decent place to work and a decent wage, so they might, they can stay probably, most likely, is what I'm trying to get at, I guess.
To my concept of, when I just had a side thought was that Kirk would, um, do what he's doing now, which is about ninety-nine things. And when we take him off of that and put him onto the facilities management or take him over to the Justice Center, then we're gonna back build, we're gonna back build his position, we're gonna train. And it's gonna take time and I think that's gonna put Kirk in a position where, you know, he's gonna have to be helping somebody do all the things he does and then over there, it might be difficult. And we, he, he doesn't have the time to do the facilities, uh, under, uh, getting a plan out there three or four, five years. So, I mean, we're talking about two different, like my thoughts are maybe different than your thoughts. And so it's like, you know, leave Kirk where he's at. And I'm not saying, like, uh, uh, the facilities manager that I'm talking about is not a suit and tie. They're a hands-on, they, they're carp, they've done carpentry work, they've done electrical work, they've done, they understand what has to happen, they have multiple relationships. We're gonna outsource most of our maintenance, we're outsourcing a lot of our maintenance now. And so that takes an administrative person that has a thorough understanding of the different disciplines in the facilities. That's what I'm talking about. And, um, so the thought, I mean, and two points here. The thought is whoever that is is gonna make less money than Kirk. Like Kirk's still gonna make thirty percent more money than this person we bring in. And we're not saying Kirk's gonna be reporting to this person or this person's gonna be reporting to Kirk. I think it does depend on who the person is, what kind of level of experience they have. And I don't think neither, one of them has to report to one or the other. I think we, we're in a really time crunch right now with this project. We need Kirk to keep doing what he's doing, we can't let this building fall apart, we can't let our other bills fall apart, all of them. He does inspect, you know, he has his people coming in and he's meeting them for inspections, he's got his own routine, he's doing a lot of work, he's very productive for what we're doing here. To take him off of that right now in this point in time, say, okay, Kirk, go learn all of what you have to learn on the Justice Center. I mean, that's just not, not a possible thing for him to do, no, no human can. So the thought was to separate those roles right now and take, and also take some heat off Kirk. So if we get a new person now, they, Kirk can say, I need to offload this and this for that new person. And watch Justice Center, they can get us a, start getting a facilities plan developed for the board so we can really understand and make a good decision on, what are we doing with this lease? What are we doing? We need a lot of information before we start pulling the trigger on what we're doing. And, um, and I just don't, I, I don't think it has anything to do with Kirk's work ethic or his capabilities. It's just a function of what do we need done now at this point in time? So that's, and I don't think, and I think like Kirk would be, he may be the person's boss. He may not, it just depends. And I think for the time being, and honestly, this can shift over to one of you. Like, you know, you can be in charge of maintenance or you can be in charge of maintenance, I don't care. Or I can switch you, you know, we can do this. Cause, um, I, I would say that in my mind, if I'm gonna be, you know, accountable for the maintenance of our facilities, I, we need that. Like, I, I, I don't see another solution. He works two full-time jobs right now and eighty-eight thousand square foot, it's just something we need to do. But if you disagree and you wanna do more with the budget, I totally get that. I just would like to remove this whole maintenance issue over to one of you so you can, you know? Cause I've got, I've got, um, a lot on my plate right now, I know we all do. But if, I, I would, I would be so much in disagreement with waiting a month or waiting two months that I just wouldn't feel comfortable with that, honestly, I just would not. I think we're in a more urgent situation than that. There's just a lot that has to be done and we cannot, and what's gonna happen is you're gonna ask Kirk Baker, cause next week we're gonna call, hey, we got our HVAC people coming in, we need training set up, get a person over here. You know what's gonna happen? And we're gonna say, Kirk, get, pull off all the things you're doing over there and all the important things and come over here and do this. And he's gonna, we're just overworking Kirk Baker, like we're gonna do it and it's every day that goes on. And, and he can select a person, or Kirk and I can go hire a person and he can be somebody he's comfortable with or someone he likes to work with, we can make it good for everybody, but, you know? That, but I, I mean, but if you don't see it this way and there's such a difference in perspective here, then I can bow out of this maintenance thing, like I don't have to, I don't have to be here.
I, I love the fact that you're, you're over the, um, Justice Center and you see the needs, probably, you know, through DCI and through the progression of this building, you know, of how important it is to transfer the knowledge. And also know Kirk would be great in learning that knowledge, but taking him away from what he's focused on. What I hear from the situation is that we need more ma- maintenance staff. I mean, I don't see why someone can't be working alongside of you and then you get the call and you go over and learn and then come back. I mean, if you, if we're hiring some good maintenance people to help you out, why can't they just be learning right along? You know, and I, I don't think that they're gonna need to learn, I think they just need to know each building and what their whole quirks are and what, that you already know. That's the transfer knowledge I see, if we hire someone who understands maintenance. Cause I, you know, projecting the buildings, the needs and all of that, um, I think Kirk does a really good job of knowing what, you know, not only the projects, but which buildings we have within our purview right now of what.
I do too, Kirk, I, every budget, I mean, you had one, but every budget, Kirk brings pressing need, year, today, last year need, next three years need, next five years need, next ten year need, and then the board historically goes through and chooses some things. But I think historically, what happened was, some of the needs were pretty substantial. Like, a building needs to be tuck pointed and it costs a hundred and fifty thousand dollars if we would've done it through, you know, ten years ago or a hundred thousand. The prior boards just said, ah, no money in the budget for that one. And so the project, I mean, just gets worse, but I mean, he's, he's doing some of those things. I'm more inclined to add some maintenance staff and, and like, let Kirk roll with, with the new building as well.
If that's not working out by the time we get to budget, then we can look at something else. I mean, I, am I not seeing this right? I mean, cause you understand the building and the needs of the building. Are you able to, like, be with DCI and see some of the things that are, we're talking about?
For the most part, I am. I'm doing a two-week, every two weeks I do a tour. Now, that doesn't necessarily encompass, um, the training and the overall day-to-day maintenance of certain items. But it is, I mean, for right now, it's, okay, this is what we're doing. I'm trying to make sure that, you know, this pipe doesn't go in here because that will limit our access to whatever. And that's what I'm trying to do right now. And it does give you an idea of kind of what you're getting into, but it, there, I mean, there is a lot to, to get in this building, once we get the keys turned over, to understand what's going on. I mean, I've already talked with our Excel group on if they would just go over with me, cause I do our maintenance here for our HVAC, just so I have an understanding of what we could possibly be looking at if we went into a maintenance career with those folks after year one. You know, and that's just warranty work. We gotta keep that in mind too, there's, I mean, I'm not sure, exactly sure we're all at what the warranty states on anything. So, I mean, for, what, like, what Darren's saying, I, I totally get it. And, you know, and the, the hard part is, is I've been doing that, maybe not to the degree you'd like to see it, cause I, I don't have the time to get into more details or, you know? So a lot of it just comes down to people, in my mind, is, is people and how does, how does the county want to see that department help manage our buildings? Cause as far as I'm concerned, maintenance helps manage buildings.
Do you rely on our admin a lot in our office to help you? Like, when you go out for bids or you ask for quotes for HVAC and stuff, do you ever have anybody else do that? Or do you do all that yourself?
No, I, I, I pretty much do that myself. Now, Megan and I, the old Megan and I work fairly close on certain items. Like, she would help with, um, the contracts with, um, the groundskeeping and the cleaning and that stuff. But part of that was because that would look more like a board. You know, there's a, there's a, I'm hired by the board, I'm a board, uh, sort of, uh, employee of the board. And so when certain things, they started doing like this, plus she, they, the board and her had more knowledge when it came to contracts, I'm more of a wrench guy. So on that aspect, you know, that was, that was good. But, you know, I don't.
See, I, I think our, we need somebody that's not, not, that is more administrative. Not, not suit and tie, not only administrative, but organizes the bids, is willing to reach out to multiple parties, is, you know, meeting with vendors a little more often and finding quality people, being able to write contracts and, and understand, to understand in detail what the contracts are. I mean, Kirk just said it, he's not really a contract guy, he's a wrench guy. And I think we do need some people that have, you know, in my world, it would be nice, so we don't have to, but, you know, look at every single contract, but we have people that can sign a maintenance agreement with somebody and understand what that, what, and I'm sure he does, I'm, I'm not saying it anything, but, uh, I'm not, I'm not trying to be negative, I just think we want a, uh, the administrative and organizational and management skills would be critical for our facilities. And I think it's somebody that, um, we can find. I mean, I've been, I, I just, I, I, there's just different disciplines. That's what we're talking, I mean, there are great maintenance people and there are great facility managers. And when I say facility management, it means somebody that can, uh, get, get a lot done through other people fast. Kirk's gets a lot of things done through his own efforts fast, to his credit. We need, we need people that can have sixteen things going on administratively, they understand. I'm not talking about people that have never wired anything or people that have never changed a bearing or people that have never taken an HVAC system or what. You know, we got a boiler issue downstairs and, uh, you know, we can't get out in front of what we're gonna do next year with it. We need to do something next year with it. And this facility manager will be helping Kirk, they will be working together. Kirk will be keeping the holes patched and keeping things running and this facility manager will be out meeting with boiler company, figuring out what we're gonna do, what are our options? Kirk has no time to go out and figure out what our detailed options are on that boiler. I mean, he can type, talk to Excel and then he can say, this is our option and that's what we do most of the time. This is one option. Well, maybe there's other, you know, I think there's other ways and other procurement methods and, and, uh, people that are pretty sharp with this, just administrative, it's two different skill sets. I don't think we, I just see, I just simply just, we don't just need another maintenance person. I mean, that's one, that's a one option. And if that's what we decide to do, I'm perfectly fine with that. And it is an option and it's an adequate, it's an adequate option. But I think we should go for it. I think we should get some real different, uh, perspectives in here, different skill sets. So that's what I'm talking about, that's, that was my way of doing it. And if you, if you choose to do it your way, you should do it your way, you know, you should do it. But, and I would support it, but I just wouldn't wanna, you know, be a comical to it. Like, from the standpoint of, this is gonna be great. And when that building goes over there and we're all over there July fifth and something's not working, I just don't wanna get that far, I don't wanna, hey, I have a plan, it's been respectfully declined by the board and it's not on me, I don't want that to be on me. I think we got a lot coming.
I'm trying to marry what, what you're saying, what Kirk's saying and the cognizance that we need to be at the budget. I'm trying to marry that.
Yeah, it's hard.
And, and to get down to exactly what is it that we need? You know, do we need an administrative person? Do we need more maintenance? I know we need maintenance, I'm just gonna put that out there.
The other thing that I would request too is, we. The other thing that I would request too is, we, we need somebody to be able to backfill me when I'm needing time.
Exactly.
Because if it, if that is the facilities manager or a maintenance person, I personally don't care. But I should be able to leave that on my kitchen table, and just.
You should never see it. You absolutely should be able.
And not that I care, I mean, I answer my phone, my phone goes off every day, all the time, doesn't matter what time. But, you know, it, it would be nice to be able to go, oh, I gotta have a person that could be there, I don't have. Or at least say, hey, guess what, you're gonna go to the building, or, or whatever. I mean, I'm not saying I would need that person instead of, but just we need somebody where I can at least take some time off. It's, and, and we, we need whatever that looks like, or do you wanna call them?
That's, I'm pretty, I'm pretty okay with, with, um, adding a person. And I don't know what exactly that looks like, I don't, I don't know how that'll impact budget, but I mean, I, I guess it's, I think it's important enough that we can, we can work it out. I still wanna know, but I, but I think we go forward with, with, um, a higher in maintenance to, whatever we call it.
And we don't know until, I mean, because in my mind, I've got candidates in mind for this. Like, I've got, I've worked with, uh, engineering companies in my work history, I've worked with maintenance companies, with facilities managers in my history. There are candidates out there that we could bring in that you would, I think, I think that's what we really need, is to look at some candidates, go, what do you do? And I think Kirk could look at, you know, obviously it's gonna be a part of this, and we would say, that's, I think we would get, that's, that's the person. Now, what if we call, um, you know, it doesn't matter, but I would like to see some more proactive management, but they have to be able to do your job, they have to be able to turn wrench and run some lines and tighten some more pipes.
Make some decisions if he's not here.
No, absolutely, I, I, so, however that's structured, that's what I don't know. That's why Kirk says, well, am I gonna be the manager? Or, I don't know, because it kinda depends on the per, it does, I don't, you know, it depends on what their skill set is, and who we can afford, and who the board approves, I mean, there's a lot unknown, so.
I'm trying to work well with Kirk.
How could you not, I mean, he's, I mean, I don't think he's.
You were quote a pause, you were quote a pause.
Everybody I talk to, everybody I talk to likes Kirk Baker in this county. Like, that's, that's, I'm, I don't think we're gonna find somebody that he can't, if we find somebody that doesn't get along with them, that's on us, you know? So, so if we're, I, I mean, if we're okay with it, I think we should start.
We need to have a job description.
I was gonna say, you can't post anything if you don't have.
I got a job description.
Something basic.
Tess already gave me one like two months ago.
Okay, super. And do we have copy of that?
I do not.
And then what was our salary range with our budget?
You guys told me.
I think, I think you just put commiserated with experience, 'cause I don't know what the person is.
You don't have to put.
You don't have to. But I, I can just tell you personally, I'm not interested in paying anybody more than sixty thousand dollars a year for this job. Like, I'm not talking about bringing in some big three-hundred facility, facility manager. I'm talking about a hands-on administrative combination person that can do a lot of different things. But sixty grand would be my max, especially based on.
It looks like that, just doing some quick research, you know, Google. Um, it looks like that's kind of like the low end of the range for, you know, around the Des Moines area, so, just not.
Right. I know. And I don't know what the market looks like. I mean, I don't know if there's any maintenance people available, but I, I mean, I, I can.
Therein lies that earlier budgetary concern, where I'm like, hmm, so, so the, the other option would be add a maintenance staff, and there's the other one, so, there's two different.
I think that, you know, going through the hiring process, this is a very wonderful place to want to work for, um, I, I mean, just.
Someone who can command ninety thousand dollars isn't, isn't gonna jump at the option and make it fifty-five.
I understand, but given the culture of mandates and all this other stuff, that might be a place where they want to come, I don't know, you know?
Yeah, maybe we can find a nursing home.
Yeah, okay, so. So, um, do you, do you, I mean, can we, can I reach out to people I know for this? Like, I know a lot of people, like, not.
If they're willing to pay, what?
You have to post the facility.
Yeah, we have to post it.
I don't disagree with that.
I mean, we're in agreement that Kirk will be a part of this hiring process.
Yeah, but do we all need to be a part of it? Like, do we need to have our?
I have no, nothing to do without maintenance. I mean, I think Kirk and his expertise could speak for me, I'm not gonna speak for you, but.
Kirk and I and Chelsea.
But I definitely wanna have final study.
What?
Like, I wanna be able to meet this person before we hire him.
Okay.
If they're gonna be, well, they won't be directing reports to us, well, maybe they might be.
Maybe that's under the board, so.
Yeah, so.
It'll, it'll all depend on how you set up that hire.
Okay.
It could be like zoning, you know, zoning, Lindsay's that, Lindsay's the director of her, and then Carrie.
Right.
So Carrie wouldn't necessarily report directly to you, she'd go to Lindsay first. It'd all be, it'd all be, I can set that up. It's, it's, it's my opinion.
Um, I think we might, I, I'm happy to, I, I would like to sit down and interview you. And, and I think that we need to get a job description that makes sense, because if our job description's going to just literally be it, folks that are making eighty, ninety, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, it's a no-go. So I don't, I don't know what that's gonna look like.
Well, we also, in addition to the, the posting, we, we really need to figure out the logistics of, is this person going to report to Kirk, is it, are they gonna report to you? 'Cause that is also something that you'd wanna put, like, this individual reports to so-and-so, or.
You, you could say.
Or this is not a management position, or something along the lines of that.
Report to the board or board-appointed person.
Okay.
That's, for the moment, I think, I don't know.
I'm just saying, like, I don't, I don't think that it's a good idea to put out a posting without having an understanding of what exactly we're doing. That doesn't make any sense.
I have, I have options, I mean, I have right here on my phone, like.
Kirk, can you send it to me?
Yeah.
Well, what, what you said, you wanna be able to walk away and know that things are being taken care of, and you're not gonna be that.
You know, I'll still answer the phone, I don't have a problem, 'cause there's a lot of times that I answer the phone or whatever, and I don't, I don't capture that time. But, you know, to be able to take a week of vacation, I'm thinking, oh, I'm gonna go paint the house, and then you're interrupted, and you're really not getting your house painted, nor are you really able to work here. I, I have conflict with that personally, 'cause I, I'm kinda wired as in, okay, we're either gonna do a good job here, or we're gonna do a good job there. I can't really do a good job both places, and I'm not really at both places.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm looking at this from, like, I know Bob, and I know that if you were here and he were to step in for a week to be full-time, I would have full confidence in the decision that you would make on your behalf and go forward with that. So I think I'm looking for someone similar to that, um, with more of, I know how you have worked on contracts in the past, and how you have projected building uses in the future. So, I don't know if you had that prior to being in this position, or if you've developed since you've been in this position, but I appreciate.
Well, part of my work history, one of my, my bigger jobs I probably had was when I worked for, for Pel Corporation, my last, one of my last stints there, I was preventive maintenance. And so, I think we had, we had well over a thousand pieces of equipment, and, um, probably close to that many employees that I touched every, every day. So on that aspect, you know, but that was my job. I didn't go out and do maintenance too on that equipment.
Okay.
So my job was to take the information from the maintenance staff or the management staff and go, look, we're having problems with this equipment, this is what it's doing. Now, my job, 'cause we already had a basic everyday thing, your checklist you're supposed to do, you know, be daily, weekly, monthly. So then if it'd become running into issues, okay, what do we need to change? What's, what's happening that we didn't catch, or is it just a design flaw, or whatever? Can we would either visit that as a group and have an event? And some people didn't agree with my methods. I was more of a hands-on, let's get it done type of guy. Or, or you would just keep tweaking your, your preventive maintenance staff. But you worked closely with maintenance, um, you know, you wanted their knowledge along with it, 'cause they worked on it, but yet you were trying to help them by maintaining that piece of equipment, so they're not there as much, if that makes sense. So that's, that's where some of that was. And then I was a facilitator or a man, or a foreman for several years there too, so.
My, my default is just adding a full-time maintenance person to, to be a director or to Kirk too. I know that's not what you're looking for, but that might, that maybe plus a facility study or something at next budget time might get us on the road, and at a later point we need to hire someone else, that, that maybe makes sense. I just don't think we're gonna get, I don't think we're gonna get what, what we're looking for in a nexus that's gonna exist. That's my guess.
Why'd you, you aim that with Kirk, and like, you get to read people, get, get a going? I'm good with it, whatever you say.
I, I mean, if, my, my take is there's, um, there's so many people that are working hard right now in this, uh, current day and age, and those people are, are sticking around and/or moving up the ladder, they're, they're not generally going backwards. Like, if you're a welder right now, and places like John Deere and others, they can't find welders.
Oh, yeah, well.
They can't, and so what does Vermeer and John Deere's do? They, they get into a bidding war, and they have deep pockets, we don't have deep pockets. I mean, much of the service, surprise of some, we really don't. Um, and so my, my point is, that sort of talent pool, I think, is gonna, gonna be looking up and not looking to, to downshift and take a fifty-five or sixty thousand dollar a year job. I, I think it's gonna be very difficult to find, which might, that's my guess. But I know, but I know that regardless, I do think we need another person for maintenance, as our next meeting's gonna pretty much dictate, we're having some shortages there, so, um, I think maybe that's, that's kind of where I'm following on this, is that.
Sounds good.
Good? Okay, we'll do it. Plus.
You guys can, you guys can do it, because, um, I think the least amount of people know, it's more of an expediency thing, like, getting someone in here to live, that could get things done, and, uh, get the knowledge transferred, or whoever you decide, whether it's you or that person, whatever, just please let me know, and I mean, I'll coordinate with them, or you, I'm good with that. All right. I think it's good.
So as far as applications go, posting it, forwarding it to you, so you can review them? Who's reviewing?
Well, we would have to figure out exactly what we're going to hire for.
I'll meet with Kirk after this.
Maintenance first of the day.
Good, let's take a little, let's, it'll be a maintenance person. I'll meet with Kirk after this, we'll get a job description to you yet this week. It's a Thursday, so by Friday I'll have it to you.
Okay.
Fair.
Thank you.
We have a closed session.
What?
We have a closed session.
We do.
We need to adjourn from this one, though.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, roll call, please.
American Turk.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.